Good evening. Welcome to the Lake Bluff School District 65 Board of Education Regular Meeting, December 13th, 2011. We have the pleasure this evening to be joined by a group of our middle school singers. After being chosen as the Dream Choir for the National Tour of Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat several years ago, and also after singing for the Illinois State Quarter Reveal in Chicago, we are excited that our Lake Bluff Middle School is upholding its tradition of excellence in music and performance by being invited to sing this season for Joffrey Ballet's Nutcracker, and this evening they're going to sing for us. It's with pleasure and pride that I introduce Encore under the direction of Ms. Anne Svikovit. Ms. C., do you have anything to say about our group?
People, I love the applause, I'm not going to lie. I would like to thank you for inviting us to be with you here this evening. These kids have already sung four half-hour shows today. They sang at a couple of nursing homes, the VA Hospital, and at the public library today. So they've really been wonderful ambassadors for the town of Lake Bluff as well as for the middle school. Their interaction with the people today, they left smiles everywhere that they sang today. And so I know that I'm very proud, and I'm sure they're proud of themselves as well for everything that they have accomplished. So I'm, without further ado, going to let the kids take it away because that's who you really want to hear. So they're going to be doing a piece called "The Sleigh," and then in honor of our performance this coming Thursday at the Nutcracker, we're going to do our own little twist on jingle bells called "The Nutcracker Jingle." So here's Encore. Well, thank you again, and we truly appreciate all the support of the school board, the community of Lake Bluff. To have a community support the arts, and that, not as well as the choir, but the band and art, drama, at our school is really a phenomenal thing. So we're really grateful to the community, and I hope you see all the efforts that pay off when we all work together and we create some really fabulous citizens here, don't we? So I'll put a hand for the parents and the school board! All right, so let's get the stools to the car and that, and everyone else, thank you and good night. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, well, we can't promise that much fun for the rest of the meeting, but we'll try. Okay, we'll move on to communications. Communications and questions from visitors. Looks like we have someone who's going to speak to us.
I'm Bob Clifford with 320 Circle Drive. Just brief comments tonight with what we understand is the proposal that you guys will see tonight. Just came up here to really reiterate the message that we've been trying to carry all along here, which is, please, please consider a long-term solution to this issue that we don't need to revisit, that doesn't need to come up on your agenda anymore, and that above all is a wise use of our taxpayer dollars to solve an issue out there. So I ask that if it does come down to something that you're voting on tonight, please vote with your heart, and above all else, please help us get back to the peacefulness for a neighborhood that was there before. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Ready to move on to reports? PTO report?
Hello. Excuse me, losing my voice. I apologize, I missed last month's meeting, so I'm going to give you an update of what we've been doing for the last couple months. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. So this is the PTO report for November and December. In November, we had a performance come to the elementary school, a couple called the Smarty Pants, and they did a presentation that covered the five machines, simple machines that the kids need to know. I think it's in third and fourth grade, and that is, see if I can pass third and fourth grade, screw, lever, pulley, wheel, and inclined plane. And they used those to make a mousetrap, and the mouse that they caught was Shelley Overman.[698.62][698.62](laughter) So it was very cute, and I think the kids and Shelley enjoyed it. Also in November, we had the Fabulous Time Travelers Program where the kids studied the life of the Wampanoans, and we do that every year, but this year was very well done. Also in November, we had the LBMS, the Middle School PTO, put on a holiday boutique. It was very fun, thank you to Charlotte Music and Pam Payton, and we earned about $1,600 in a nice evening with over 14 vendors, I believe. In December, we provided snacks for the Read to Me program, as we did in October. We also had another performance group come, the Emerald City Theater Company, and they did a version of Charlie and the Chocolate Factory for the entire elementary school. Our Spirit Ware sale for the fall came to a close. We earned about $300 to $400 on that sale, and that, those offerings will actually be offered again come January with a delivery date of late February. So if there's anything that you wanted to get and missed it, you still can. And then in the spring, we'll add some other items that would be more spring-like, probably in April and May. This week, we've been having the holiday parties at that elementary school. The fifth graders are going to Atwood this week at different times, so those parties have been moved to, they had some yesterday, and then the others will be on Friday. And then MJ Brady and many wonderful volunteer bakers are preparing and delivering cookies at both the elementary and the middle school for the staff. And then December 16th is our deadline to buy tickets for the PTO adding to the Chicago Wolves, which is on January 21st. So come on out and watch the Wolves. That's it. Thank you, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Next report is the interim superintendent. Just a couple of things. I found out this morning, I received a call from the State Board of Education, and the state board is contacting districts relative to dispersing the remaining reallocation of federal era funds, and they notified me that Lake Bluff, if they would apply, is eligible to receive a portion of the reallocated federal era funds, which was a fairly extensive infusion of money into operations of school districts, and so I was very excited and shared this information with Jane. And the information shared with me by the state board was that we are eligible for $311. I thought she was going to say $311,000, but she stopped at $311. But I wanted to inform the board, so we are eligible to collect $311. As Jane and I talked, it'll probably take $311 worth of time to make sure we get that, but I wanted to update the board on that.
Or how we spend it.
Yeah. Second of all, I'm going to defer to Anne to talk just a little bit about and document this in front of you, the teacher evaluation performance rating. We've been meeting, and the statutes have changed in the state of Illinois relative to how teachers are evaluated and how teachers will be able to be retained and/or dismissed by school districts. So Anne, if you want to just briefly go over that.
It's a pretty complex process, and it's phased in over several years. We need to change the way we rate our teachers and use the state mandated categories of unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and excellent, starting this year. And so we've had a committee that has convened and have already written the definitions, which you have in front of you, for these categories. So we have accomplished a lot. When I talk to neighboring districts and other districts in the county, they're struggling with this language. So our committee has really worked productively and come to consensus on this. This will affect how we riff teachers in the future, should we need to riff teachers. It is no longer based on tenure, it's based on performance. So teachers who perform and receive excellent ratings will be the teachers who remain in the classroom. Teachers who receive unsatisfactory or needs improvement ratings would be the first two classes to be riffed. So that will all be phased in. The Illinois State Board of Education just published the guidance for this, and it's not regulatory guidance yet, but they came out with it actually the day our committee met, last week. But we needed to meet by December 1st, we have our categories decided. We will have teachers rated in these four categories based on the evaluations they have in their files here, or the evaluations the principals are currently doing now. It will ultimately end up in a teacher evaluation performance rating that incorporates student assessment data, and that will also affect the principals' performance ratings too, and their contracts will be based on student scores and improvement as part of their performance. The state will give us more guidance on that. It'll probably not be phased in until 2015 or 2016 for Lake Bluff, but we're starting in the process, and I feel like we've had a good collaborative start.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate Anne, who has facilitated this between the staff and the administration, and in just two meetings. We're further ahead than most districts that have been meeting six months, and I'm really comfortable with the definitions that are going to be part of these four categories. So we wanted to give the board an update on that. Next item, the dashboard concept that we've talked about with the board is just about ready to be rolled out. We're probably going to be making that live real soon, and most of the pieces of that, we will have information online, and hopefully by the end of the week, or maybe shortly after we get back, we'll have that ready to go for the community to be able to access and look at snapshots, versions of the goings-on in the district. The next thing is to remind the board that in January, January 10th, we do have a retreat, it's actually a board meeting, we'll be talking about financial projections and long-term planning, but to keep that on your calendar. And finally, I passed around to you a letter that I sent out to staff, a holiday letter, and you're welcome to have a copy of that. I do reference the board in the letter, so I took liberty to do that. And that would conclude my report. So Anne, do you have any additional items under Student Services?
I just want to update them on the public, on the NSED, the status with NSSED.
We have that under Old Business.
I'm sorry. Okay. We did have, one of the other major things we completed this year was combined training on level literacy intervention. It's a really new, well-thought-out, planned, researched reading initiative for struggling readers. So they'd be our Tier Two or Tier Three students who aren't reading at the level of their peers, and we had the final training this fall. We invited Oak Grove again and Lake Forest District 67 teachers to come and be trained with us, with a trainer from Texas who was very impressed with our group, and all the group evaluations were extremely positive and wanted her to come back again. The collaboration between the three districts was really great because they were able to talk in their subject area and brainstorm through some of the problems, and really establish relationships I hope will continue to share best practice tips, what works and what doesn't, and how to problem solve. So that was great. An update from Joanne on curriculum is that her committees are established, and she has four dates, two for the math curriculum committee to meet, and two for the language arts committee to meet, and she's continuing working with the technology. So she's getting a lot of things covered in a short amount of time.
Okay. Next report is from the board president.
I did have a couple of things. One is, I wanted to thank the Encore Group again. I don't know if they're home by now and watching us, but they are fantastic, and not only is there a lot of natural talent there, but there's a lot of hard work. Those kids and Ms. C. practiced before school several mornings a week, and also on the recesses. So they do work hard to be that good, and I think we, as a school board and as a school district, can be very proud of them, and the fact that they're invited time and again to sing downtown and show off really how hard they work, I think is incredible. I did also happen to see them this afternoon at the library when they performed their last performance of the day, and they were still smiling and singing and full of energy, and I know they did have a great day, and brought a lot of smiles to a lot of people around town. So the other thing I wanted to say is, I understand that our seventh and eighth grade boys and girls basketball teams are halfway through their seasons and doing very well, and I happened to catch a couple basketball games too, and saw, you know, not only the fine play of the teams, but also the display of teamwork and sportsmanship that our kids show when they play against the surrounding teams, and it's a nice reflection on not only them, but their coaches and parents and our school districts. So one last thing, speaking of basketball, I understand this Friday, there's going to be a big basketball match at the middle school between the seventh grade girls teamed with the eighth grade boys versus the eighth grade girls teamed with the seventh grade boys. So I guess that's going to be quite a match, and that is to benefit hoops for heart. So beyond that, happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you.
Is there some kind of beard shaving thing associated with that?
There is a beard shaving thing going on too. Our new physical education teacher, Dan Williams, I believe, has offered himself for that cause.
Will be the victim?
Yes.
You know, I was supposed to substitute principal on Friday, but now I may reconsider.
(laughter) Conveniently out of town.
I would be careful.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Old Business, first item under Old Business is NSSED recommended changes. And in your packet are three documents. One is a summary of finance committee recommended changes between current practice with the NSSED co-op and the recommended new practice. The second document is a membership cost structure analysis memo that was sent by both Dr. Griffith and myself to the superintendent of NSSED, Dr. Thomas. And then the final document is a membership cost comparison between this current year and next year. And so Anne, I'll defer to you to summarize this since you have a bit more experience with NSSED than I do.
Well, the NSSED administration has worked hard to come to a consensus with the districts through their finance committee to look at the cost structure, look at the fees, and try to make it more equitable and fair to the districts, and we feel like they did a good job with this. And we have projected savings, and we have to say projected because we don't know, a lot of it is based on our IDEA grants, and we don't know the amounts for them next year, but we just surmise from the current year. And tuitions, we still would be eligible to have tuitions to use there, should we need that, or any other placement that we choose to use. We all feel very positive about it. We've let our parent group know that the parent has, we've had a parent advisory committee to help us through this process, and they got the documents with the letter saying that we are happy to announce that should NSSED vote to adopt this cost structure, we would be coming back to the board in January to ask you to resend the letter of intent to withdraw from the cooperative. And we'll be letting our special ed parents in district know through, yeah, through a letter via email tomorrow.
I mean, this is kind of a pattern that you're seeing with some of these co-ops throughout the state and even across the country. A lot of what this is about is the, a different distribution of federal dollars back to the member districts. In the past, co-ops have used a larger percentage of federal special ed dollars for their operation, and the discussions that this district and the other North Shore districts have had with NSSED is to try and capture more of that, more of those dollars for their own operation as it's applied to special ed students. And so I was familiar with a very similar concept with the special ed district of Lake County, SEDOL, which is another co-op in the county that's a little bit, structured a little bit differently, but we had this very same discussion two years ago, and it resulted in a very similar sort of outcome in terms of more money coming back to the district. So I applaud those people that were really instrumental in initiating this. Are there questions from the board?
I've got a question. It's kind of just a clarification to perhaps put some minds at ease. Does our position with NSSED now, assuming that they adopt this, we adopt this, affect the programming choices for any of the children or students who are either enrolled or could be enrolled in programs at NSSED?
No.
Or your choices to use their different services?
It keeps all the options open to use any of the services, any of the programs that are available, that are appropriate for students.
Okay. No, it has no impact on programming. It's only about, you know, revenue sharing differently. So, any questions? Okay. Moving on to the next item under Old Business is the Lake Bluff Middle School chiller modification, and you do have a spreadsheet in your packet. I'm going to defer to Jane here in a minute, but where we're at tonight is to present you with a comprehensive recommendation of modifications to the chiller and the structure at the middle school. In addition to that, we're going to indicate to the board that we will be modifying the hours of operation come next season, when the chiller is more operational, and we will discern which hours of the evening that it does not need to operate. Now, part of the reason we're able to do that is that we're going to make modifications to the servers, not modifications to the servers, but modification to the cooling of the servers in the library, so that would diminish the necessity to have the overall chiller operate in the summertime, in the evening, and on the weekend. So that's one thing we're going to do, starting right away in the spring. That being said, the recommendations that we have before you tonight, I'll let Jane delineate as to what those are. What I will tell you is that we're going to recommend to the board that all of the modifications that Jane outlines be modifications that the board deliberate to take action on. There was a slight discussion at a meeting with Dr. Schomer, who we enlisted as an expert to analyze this situation, where we would phase in different components. In talking further with Dr. Schomer and with representatives from both firms that we had analyzed the cause, the feeling was that we're probably better served by doing the combination of these. I will also tell the board that one of the things that we had mentioned at the last meeting was perhaps the possibility of completely enclosing the chiller. We spent a lot of time talking to Dr. Schomer and representatives from both firms, also with our engineers from our architectural firm, and also with train officials, and the feeling was that that modification just was not advisable at all, because number one, it would be very expensive, you'd have to completely dismantle the current enclosure, start over, and engage in some significant new modifications, including a routing of air, and on top of that, probably compromise the efficiency of operation of that current unit. I will also tell you, though, that the recommendations that we're going to share with you in a moment will necessitate having to work with the village relative to zoning modifications, because one of the recommendations will be to change the elevation of the walls. So all that being said, Jane, if you want to pick up from there?
I'll do my best.
Or I can continue to stumble through.
Yes, okay, I'll do my best. You have a little spreadsheet within your board packet that kind of outlines the proposals from the two different firms. We've got a proposal from INC., and we do have a representative here from INC. If you have technical questions, he can help address it. Also, from a company called BRD. The recommendations were...
The recommendations were, we are recommending, and I'll outline these as best I can and so our neighbors can hopefully understand what we're going to do. Basically, there are five things. We're going to install acoustical panels on the interior of all four walls and some of those panels will extend up above, and Mr. Rubino, if I say anything wrong, you can correct me. Will extend above that height of the current walls. That's on the current brick building of the school itself. We're going to install baffles over the top of the enclosure. We're going to add wrapping to pipes, various pieces of the chiller equipment itself. And actually, there was a difference in the materials between the two companies. I spoke to Mr. Rubino and they're actually going to upgrade what his original proposal was with the wrapping to match what BRD proposed, due to Dr. Schomer saying it was a little better material from BRD. He's going to add that in. There's no difference in the cost. We're going to install discharge fan silencers to the top of the chiller and we're going to increase the height of the walls, three and a half feet with the metal material. That in a nutshell is what we're recommending to do, doing it all at once. Now, I want to add, these are not hard bids with, based on very specific specifications, like when you're building a building. So we may need to tweak some things. For example, there is some concern with installing the baffles and the discharge fan silencer. However, we think we can accommodate that by installing, making some modifications to the north concrete wall by installing some louvers to increase airflow. We don't have to do it to the east wall because the chiller itself is far enough away from the east wall, just treating that front north wall should do that. So there may be some changes. It may, probably won't come in exactly $100,415 as it says here, but we're not going to change the scope of the project significantly. We need, still need to do some shop drawings. We'll have those reviewed by train as soon as possible. And once we get all that outlined, they can start fabrication of some of the materials.
Couple of comments. In talking to Dr. Schomer and talking to Mr. Rubino and representatives from BRD, the question that we asked them is if we, what is it that we can engage in to maximize the reduction of the sound of the operation of this unit? Any and all interventions? And so these are any and all of the interventions that were recommended to us by those individuals. And so Jane and I chose to say, why don't we recommend all of them as a package? The second comment I want to make to the board is, you know, what will be the impact of this collection of modifications to the level of sound? And the estimation from Dr. Schomer is that it will reduce the sound by somewhere in the range of 14 to 18 decibels. Now, I don't, I'm not a sound expert and you may be able to comment as to the magnitude of change, but what he said is that it is a very, very large magnitude of change of sound reduction, given that. Questions from the board?
Jane, I think you've covered this in previous meetings, but what is the, if you remember, what is the expected or anticipated lifespan of that unit? Is it like a 20-year unit or 10?
God, I hope so. Yes.
We all hope so.
God, I hope so. Yeah, I think that's a very fair estimate on the life of the unit, absolutely.
You're with us a while.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And then I guess my second question, just anticipating what the zoning board might be concerned about. Do we have any visuals or drawings or anything of what this might look like?
I can tell you, having lived it a few years ago, they will not, they will have, they will expect that. We'll have to provide them with some drawings.
Perhaps even sample material or something so they can see what the visual impact will be.
Yeah, they'll require that of us. They'll require it.
I spoke to Drew Irwin yesterday and he forwarded me the paperwork on the granting of the original variation and indicated that, you know, we would have to work with them relative to this new modification. But he was confident that that could be expedited because a lot of this has already been done. So we're really only talking about a elevation of the walls slightly as opposed to a new structure.
That's really, that's the crux of the zoning issue. It's the elevation of the walls. It's not the other things that go on within the...
At least that was the discussion that he and I had. No, no, he and I don't...
Some of it is materials also, isn't it? Not just the height of the material. Yeah, but they're...
They're really, I think, I think the focus will be on the walls and the elevation of the height of the walls.
Other questions?
What is the advantage to taking these actions all simultaneously? I know at one point, Dr. Schomer suggested the phasing in and we've talked about that. It seems to me, one advantage of doing it all at the same time is that you might get cost benefit of just the activity happening all at once rather than over time. Have we identified any other benefits to taking all actions at the same time?
Well, there's going to be, there's going to be some structural concerns. We're going to have to add some steel to support some of this equipment. So if we're doing it all at once, then fabrication can be done to take care of everything all at once rather than, well, we did, we made this modification for this, but now we're going to do this, we have to do something else, which is also part of the cost. But it just, it just makes more sense to construct everything at the same time.
And in addition, we get that 14 to 18 decimal level down more quickly, obviously.
Absolutely.
And I think another thing is, you know, each of these has been indicated to us would improve reduction of sound. But, you know, having not lived next to this, if I did live next to this, I would want to maximize the reduction of sound. And so by combining all of these, you maximize the reduction of sound in the degree that you can.
As quickly as possible.
As quickly as possible.
So that leads me to ask a question that you had said that this is any and all. There is a decision though, not to enclose, right? Or am I mistaken?
It really is not a feasible option.
It's not feasible, okay.
For this piece of equipment, it's not feasible.
And do both of our, both of the firms say that it was not feasible? Do trains say that it was not feasible?
Train says it's not feasible.
I know that Dr. Schomer had originally not encouraged us to take that action.
Well, and he was working with train engineers as well. So he, and everything he did, he was communicating with, not the same train people that we worked with, but with train engineers, absolutely.
And to clarify that, the reason why the full enclosure option is not really a feasible option has to do with, again, the efficiency of the unit compromises, compromising the efficiency, but also isn't there a warranty issue?
Well, it's really, it's compromising the operation of the equipment at this point in time. There are chillers that are designed to be placed underground. This one is not. This one was not designed to do that. So enclosing it basically would be the same thing as if we had buried it in the ground. It has to have the airflow.
Did these proposals come with any indication about timeframe?
Yes. And Mark, if...
Mark, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. I had told Jane, I did.
Hey, I did.
In fact, Mike, I'd also like to address a couple of points if I could clarify.
Please do.
For example, the drawings, if we were to contract with you to do this, the first thing we'll do is bring out our engineers to the site and do a detailed site measurement and evaluation of the equipment that's there for the purpose of designing the system, preparing shop drawings that you can use to get permits and basically sign off on the project before we build anything. So there will be a rather extensive set of drawings made. We will also have our own professional structural engineers review all the structural requirements, provide calculations, stamp and seal for the state of Illinois. You know, whether you have your own architect or not, we do that for our own peace of mind going forward. So the timing would be, as soon as we can come to an agreement on a contract, we would come out and do that field work, I would say, within a couple of weeks after an agreement. We would then prepare our drawings, probably take us another two to three weeks. And after that, once you approve it, we would start fabrication. And Jane and I had discussed would an April 1 completion date be feasible? And the answer is absolutely. I had a further breakdown, I think, that I sent you, Jane. I'm looking for it on the actual timetable. Pardon me while I dig through my file. But that's, we need about eight to 10 weeks to fabricate the materials. Here we go. It was two to three weeks to submit drawings, about seven to nine weeks after drawing approval to deliver the materials. And the actual work in the field, once we deliver the materials, is going to take about eight to 12 working days. So this is all kind of weather dependent. And as we discussed, I'd rather not try to attempt this over winter, but we'd like to fabricate the parts during winter and be ready to get these up in March or possibly a little sooner. But that's the timeframe, reasonable timeframe.
When do we typically start the chillers?
You know, I was trying to remember. I can't believe that we started in April. Certainly, it's possible and may depending, graduation is a biggie, but that's why we talked about, we'd like to get this all done. They'd like us to get this all done before we have to start them up.
Jane, can you comment on the sequence of the actions that would be taken, you know, in terms of the zoning board of appeals?
We need to get zoning board going ASAP. I mean, because we like, we want them to get moving as soon as possible, which is why we're asking you to take action this evening so then we can start working on a contract and they can start working on drawings and moving ahead.
If I could also address, you asked about the efficiency or the economies of doing all three things at once versus separately. Now, our bid to you assumed they would all be done at once. So we've built in some efficiencies. And what those are is, and Jane alluded to many of them, but there's engineering time for one. So we're going to, we're going to come out and do the engineering for the whole project. If you did it piecemeal, we'd engineer one part, we'd engineer the second, we'd engineer the third. The most logical progression, if you did it in pieces, would be to do the walls first, extend the walls, put the panels on the walls, and then go with the baffles across the top and then the exhaust silencers on top of the train units. And those really all tie in mechanically together. So to do them piecemeal would present some problems and additional costs such as the structural support for the baffles are dependent on what we do on the walls. So if we just came out and did the walls and ignored the baffles and come back and do that, it would change probably how we would go about designing that structural steel because now we have more things that exist than do today. So we're kind of starting with a clean slate. Not to say it's impossible to do it, but if we did it in the normal progression of how we would want to do this, it makes a lot of sense to do it all at once. Not to mention the move in and out costs of the installation crew and equipment that is required to do this, it would be three times instead of one.
I have one other question for you. When we met at the middle school a couple of months ago, I think you made a comment that, you know, there were some open spaces in there that you could do something with. Is that the adding sound absorption to solid surfaces of the housing?
Yes. Yes. And what we're going to do with the wrapping, we're going to wrap piping and compression chambers and things that we identified on the unit. I think we're going to rewrap a couple of items that have been, I think, factory wrapped but not adequately. And then adding sound absorption, that's to open spaces inside the chiller unit itself. So we want to get as much sound absorption in there as possible.
Okay.
And also, to clarify the baffles, I would, I would describe the baffles almost more like a semi-open roof. So just to put everyone's mind at ease, when you say a roof, we're talking about a solid building roof. The baffles are going across the top and they, in effect, create a roof that allows air to flow through it. So that's why we feel that that's a reasonable compromise from the solid roof, which I concur with Dr. Schomer and members of the board, that the total enclosure is not feasible.
Other questions?
I do want to let the board know, as far as paying for this, we do have some funds left in the capital projects fund, just a little over $100,000. So really, we can use, we can use those funds to pay for this project. So we won't have to take money out of operating funds. If we do, it'll be very, very little.
I could see that the bid is better from INC. But other than that, other relative merits, and perhaps this isn't the opportunity to speak about that, but the relative merits of the bids?
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad to see that they came in really so close. You know, if you, if we had various differences, then we've got a lot more work to do. I did have Dr. Schomer really review these. I've sent them to our MEP engineers, train's seen them, everybody's seen them. And I would be quite comfortable with either firm. However, because of the dollars, they're a little lower, but they're also from Illinois. The other firm is not. They're out of state. I like, I like that fact. Mr. Rubino has put in a lot of time here on our behalf up to this point. And so I just think it, it seemed an easy recommendation for me to the board to recommend INC.
Other questions from the board?
One last question. Can you comment on your confidence at how this, how all these processes will help us meet the daytime and evening EPA standards that we've talked about throughout this whole process?
Well, I don't think I've been party to the discussions about the EPA standards. And if I'm not mistaken, you're, you're meeting those today.
Daytime, not nighttime.
Daytime. The nighttime, yes, I'm very confident. These three treatments, I agree entirely with Dr. Schomer on the 14 to 18 decibel reduction and we can talk about that more if you like, but that will get you well below the nighttime requirements.
Coupled with our timing changes.
Coupled with your timing change, right.
Well, and one of the reasons why we put these together in a package was to exceed, you know, any sort of EPA guidelines because the issue with the people that live next door to this is, it's one thing to meet guidelines, but it's another to correct noise emission to the degree that it's more comfortable to be around. And so we're confident that this does that. Other questions from the board? If not, I promised Mr. Clifford that he could have a chance to ask a question.
I think we've all kind of struggled with, you know, what does an 18 decibel reduction really mean to your...
I think we've all struggled a little bit with what exactly 18 decibel reduction means. I can't, I can't gauge decibels with my ears. I can only gauge what's pleasant or what's not. So I guess the question is really to Mr. Rubino here, is there a way that for the layman, you can suggest what type of reduction this is going to sound like?
Let me try. First, I brought this little thermometer graph of decibels. So without getting into a whole physics lesson, decibels is just a relative scale of measuring sound acoustical energy. And the thing that I think a lot of people have trouble with is not a linear scale. 10 decibels plus 10 decibels does not mean it's, the combined effect is 20 decibels. It's not twice as loud. It's a logarithmic scale. So for example, a pneumatic chipper, which is fairly loud, grinding wood or concrete, runs at about 110 decibels while most business offices are at 60. But if that gives you a relative scale, now where you're at right now at your lot line, I believe is about right here, about 54 decibels according to Paul Schomer's data. With the 14 to 18 decibels, and that, I can pass this around, but that tells you you're about at conversational speech. Now, that's going to be annoying to you if you're out there in the evening. But an 18 decibel reduction below that will put you about here, which is like a library or a living room. Furthermore, here's a chart that actually tells you what these things sound like. So a 10 decibel reduction is half as loud or a 10 decibel increase is twice as loud. A 20 decibel reduction is a quarter as loud as where you were. So 14 to 18 is somewhere between a half and a quarter as loud, if that helps you get your head around it. Also, do you still have that music that you played when they were singing? Is that... Because I did bring a sound level meter. I was going to do a little demo, but I guess we can't do that. But we can, we can, I can turn it on and we can talk and, you know, kind of get a feel for what 10 decibel difference means. But 10 to 14 to 18 decibels is very substantial in terms of the amount of acoustic energy that's being reduced and the loudness that you're going to perceive. and the loudness that you're going to perceive. So right now, when I'm talking, and if you want to, why don't you clap? That's about 85 decibels. And now we're at 45. So 85, that's a 30 decibel reduction, but it went from loud to, this, you're not going to get any quieter than this. So you're going to be 54 decibels minus 14 to 18 decibels. You're in the low 40s. It's very quiet. I'm not sure how else to demonstrate that.
So us, us just- Sitting here, when you, we weren't saying anything, that was 40, 40 something?
It seemed louder or what?
That seems high for, you know, compared to the chiller at 54, but I hope it's what you had.
But it's because it's not linear. It's, it's not linear. So 10 decibels is a lot more, 10 decibel difference is a lot more energy. And the reason it's not quieter is, well, first of all, you really can't measure much lower than 25, 30 decibels with, with the best equipment. The lights, you'd be surprised what creates noise in here, the lighting, the electrical, the air conditioning, even if it's not running, you might hear some things. So what I guess what I'm saying is, I would expect that you're going to perceive the difference as about one quarter as loud, 0.25% as loud as what you're hearing it now. Only you can say if that's satisfactory.
Other questions from the board? We will be bringing this to you later on, in fact shortly, as a recommendation for you to take action. You can take action tonight, you can delay it, but there really isn't much more that we will present to you.
I do have one more question.
Sure.
What's the expected upkeep on this? Life expectancy of the baffles?
Well, they're all, they're all epoxy painted metal products. So the life expectancy of the paint is about 15, it's a 15-year paint, depending on the weather and the exposure. I mean, the maintenance requirements will be to paint this 15 years from now or so. But other than that, there's no mechanical moving parts. There's really nothing to, to maintain other than making sure that there isn't debris or, you know, leaves or twigs that might get into the baffles. But you kind of have that condition now anyway around the chiller. So whatever you're doing to keep the chiller kind of clean of debris, you'll want to do the same thing here.
So it sounds like it's roughly equivalent to the life expectancy of the, of the equipment itself.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
Excuse me, I had one other question.
Sure.
And not specifically about the proposal, but when we met, we talked about reasons for running the chiller after hours. And so one issue was the, the servers that are in the building. Another issue is that we have crews apparently over the summer that work overnight. And, and so I think we could probably vote on this, but I'm just, at some point, I guess it would be nice to talk about, okay,
we're, we're, we're planning on, on putting up some walls around the servers and adding a separate cooling.
Right.
We're talking $4,000 to $5,000 cost to do that. Actually, Nate and I have talked, and we're talking about kind of maybe repurposing some of that space up there anyway, to free up some other space for instructional important things. So we're, that to me is going to be an easy do. We're talking to our vendor who provides our nighttime custodial, and nighttime being 3 to 11 is a shift. They continue to work that in the summer, but we're going to ask them to work days during the summer. So we're trying to address that as well.
I thought they said it was necessary for, for some reason that we do that, so that's-
Well, when we wax floors and if it's, if it's hot and it's, you know, 90 degrees and 85% humidity, it, it takes us longer, because it takes longer to allow it to dry. But we're going to work them during the days and, and try to then eliminate the, the evening. When Dr. Schommer talked about not running it at night, he talked about night, like at 11:00 PM. I don't think that's what we all are talking about at night, we're talking evenings. So we want to try to eliminate that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The only other comment that I'd like to offer is that I've had the opportunity in the last six months as the interim to work with these folks out here, and I just want to compliment them. It's been a very respectful and positive sort of interchange, at least between myself and them. And so I just want to thank them for that, because it's a very sensitive situation. I haven't quite had that kind of situation, but I've had something close in my life, and so I'm very appreciative of that. So if there are no other questions, we'll move on to action. And so the first is approval of tax levy. We need a motion for the board to approve the certificate of tax levy for 2011, excluding bond and interest.
I mean, the Board of Education-
Approves the certificate of tax levy for 2011, excluding bond and interest.
Second.
Discussion. Does she have any other questions? Jane said we've been talking about this for the last several months, so we're pretty aware of the numbers. I think so, we have a roll call.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Leanne Charlo?
Yes.
Mark Barry?
Yes.
Susan Ryder?
Yes.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Al Fifehouse?
Yes.
Okay. Second is the approval of the Lake Bluff Middle School chiller modifications. We need a motion for the board to approve the administration's recommendation relative to the Lake Bluff Middle School chiller modification as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mm-hmm.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Al Fifehouse, yes. Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Leanne Charlo?
Yes.
Mark Barry?
Yes.
Susan Ryder?
Yes.
Next item is the approval of amended administrative contract, Shelley Overman. We need a motion for the board to approve the amended administrative contract for Shelley Overman as presented, which includes the performance goals and indicators.
I move that the Board of Education approves the amended administrative contract for Shelley Overman, principal, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
The purpose of this is to correct what I understood to be an administrative error in the earlier contract.
Correct. Anyone that, or any administrator that has a multi-year contract must have performance goals and indicators. And one of the things I discovered is that that contract did not. And so it was necessary to amend that contract to include them. And so Ms. Overman and myself have come up with performance goals and indicators, and will be attached, but there needed to be an amended contract to include them.
And the term of the contract remains the same?
Yes, it does. Yeah, there's no change in the term of the contract. The only thing was to add what was missing.
Susan Ryder?
Yes.
Mark Barry?
Yes.
Leanne Charlo?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Al Fifehouse?
Yes.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Okay, next item is policy approval. You do have, we have the second reading for a number of revisions to press policies. So we need a motion for the board to approve the revisions to policies, administrative procedures, and exhibits per the attachment.
I move-
I move that the Board of Education approves the revisions to policies, administrative procedures, and exhibits as per the attachment.
Second. Any questions or discussion?
Leanne Charlo?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Al Fifehouse?
Yes.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Susan Ryder?
Yes.
Mark Barry?
Yes.
Okay. We don't have any additional action as a result of closed session, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the following items on the consent agenda: regular meeting minutes, November 15, 2011; closed session meeting minutes, November 15, 2011; destruction of closed session tapes for May 25, 2010; P-card report, bills payable, treasures report, activity reports.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Do you want to make one clarification to the bills listing? It indicates a bills payable for the mural storage, and that should be the frontispiece storage. I think that descriptor has been incorrect over the last few months, but we're not paying to store the mural, we are paying to store the frontispiece. We'll get that corrected in future bills.
Thank you, Jane.
Yep. Any questions? Discussion?
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Al Fifehouse?
Yes.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Susan Ryder?
Yes.
Mark Barry?
Yes.
Leanne Charlo?
Yes.
Next item is new business, first item, summer school program. Ann?
We've, we've established the dates for our summer school program, this coming June 2012. Summer school will start June 13th and run through July 11th, with July 4th off. Offerings are not decided yet for the kaleidoscope program, but it'll run similar to the past several years.
Questions? Okay. Next item, issue RFP for auditing services effective FY 2012. Jane?
I just wanted to let the board know that we will be seeking new auditors this next year. We've been very happy with the auditors that we've had, but they've been here for seven years, and I, I just think it's a good idea to change auditors. I don't think your business manager or your auditors ought to get too chummy. So we'll be, we'll have new auditors next year. I'll be issuing a RFP and asking the board to approve the new auditing firm probably in February. Great.
Okay. The last item under new business is 2012-13 school calendar. And again, Ann has been working on this. You do have a copy, I believe, in the packet. We're not asking for adoption tonight, but we're asking you to look at it, because we will bring it back in January for adoption for the new calendar. Anything you want to highlight on that, Ann?
I think that it's worthy to note that we are on the same break schedule for winter break and spring break as both the 115 and 67, so. And some of our staff development days are also aligned with 115, so that families with high schoolers and students in Lake Bluff 65 will have the same days off. And we did hear from parents that they preferred not to have our district have early dismissals on the days that the high school had late starts. So we attempted to avoid that to the best of our ability in this calendar.
So we will be bringing this back in January for you to adopt.
Ann, are there, are there other differences, start of school or end of school, with 67 and/or 115?
There are differences in the start of school dates, yes.
Slight.
Just very slight, they're really all within five days of each other. The other change in this calendar is we did not ask for the half-day staff development days this year. We talked about it in the committee, the calendar committee, and with the administrators and the curriculum director. And they felt like the early dismissals were actually as productive and less disruptive to the educational process. So we added a couple of early dismissals and took out the half-days, but kept some full staff, full-day staff development days.
And Ann, it looks like we're ending on a Thursday, is that correct? So we've got a wiggle day in there?
We have a wiggle day in there, yes. Yeah.
Yes.
In case of a snow day, yeah.
You know, I get asked a lot, why do we start on a Friday? And we have, it's like an hour or two. You know, summer is so short here, people object to losing that last weekend of summer, and I don't know if that's something the board has talked about in the past or there's particular reasons for it, but I thought I'd mention it.
Well, one of the reasons the calendar committee members cited was they really liked having the, we have staff development days for teachers before. And then the students attending on Friday helps, like, they feel like the class settles in, they know the expectations, they know what they're going to do. And then when they come to school on Monday, it's kind of like the start of a full work week, and they go to work and get five days in and feel like that has been productive from the teaching point of view.
You know, I would agree that for families, it's probably inconvenient, but for kids and for staff, it's a good thing. Because as, as Ann said, when they come for that half-day or that, that quick day, you know, they kind of assess who their teachers are, they get the lay of the land, and then when they show up, first thing on Monday, it's an all-day, and they're there for real. But it does compromise that last weekend, I will, I will agree with you. Okay. That would conclude our items under new business. That being said, we're ready for a motion to have the meeting adjourned.
I move that we adjourn. Second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.